Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission Tuesday, May 2, 2023, to order 6:00 PM. If you'd all be so kind as to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Vice Chair Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepa?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Terrific. We have a full house. We'll be able to take action on the bylaws this evening. So that's great. Or actually, and officers as well, more important.
I don't know how I ended up here.
Oh, yes. We're going to do what's known in organic chemistry as a 1-2 dihydrode shift. I'm going to switch my carboxyl group with yours.
The way I like it. So here's your chair.
All right.
I like this chair.
Oh, no problem.
I just got it just the way I like it.
Cue the Benny Hill music, please.
Not to be included in the minutes.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to just commend staff on the quality of the packet. Just the detail and everything is just fantastic. Thank you very much. Closed session report, none. Move for adoption of the agenda, please.
So move.
All in favor?
Second. I'll second. Aye?
Aye. Opposed? Fantastic. Consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered routine be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless a member of the commissioner, staff, or audience wishes to remove an item. The item on the consent calendar this evening is approval of the minutes. I'll just make one note on the minutes. It's super minor. On page 3 of 4, 13.2, that last full paragraph, Commissioner Carter informed the commission that he will contact... The letter "A" is in there. I think it slipped in there somehow. Just strike that. I don't think we need to do anything, right? Okay. With that, could I have a motion on adoption of the consent calendar, please? Adoption of approval in minutes, actually.
I'll move to adopt it as amended.
You've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific.
I'll abstain. I was absent that meeting. No problem.
We have one abstention, as noted. Thank you, Commissioner. No items pulled. Items of interest to the public, public comment. This is an opportunity for members in our vast audience to approach the commission and address us on any item which is not on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the audience which wishes to address the commission on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move on to item 8, written communications, non-agenda items. Do we have anything, staff?
We have no written communications.
Fantastic. Presentations and educational workshop sessions. I believe we have none. Okay. That moves us on then to item 10, environmental assessments, public hearings. Tonight, we have 10.1 Site Plan Review SPR 2306 in the historic district. This is consideration of a site plan review application within the low-density multifamily residential historic district zone to modify existing multifamily residents. Two, remove and replace existing roof. Two, remove dry rot and replace with the same material and style. Three, replace gutters and downspouts. And four, find the project categorically exempt from the CEQA guidelines, section 15301 and 15331. And I believe, Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report.
I do. SPR 23-06 is a request from the applicant to replace the existing roof of a two-story multifamily dwelling located within the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historic District. All rakeboard, fascia, and soffits removed shall be replaced with like material and style. Further, the roof replacement would include the addition of roof ventilation and flashing. Photos of the project site are included in Attachment 3 and on the wall behind you. The subject structure is approximately 2,700 square feet with a total of five dwelling units. It was constructed in 1886 and is in one of the oldest residential neighborhoods in the city. The structure, while modified since its construction, has characteristics of Victorian architecture, including a pitched cross gable roof, ornamental fascia and rakeboard, ornamental columns, and a bay window. The visual diversity of Placerville's residential areas, especially residential historic areas, is a unique resource within the city. Every change that is made to a structure, especially one within a historic district, can chip away at the integrity of the structure as a whole. Efforts to personalize and update a structure will result in a combination of miscellaneous parts that bear no relation to each other or to the original design. The existing structure is a reflection of this, and the proposed project would work to make the facade of the structure more consistent with visible features. The proposed replacement of modern shingles with modern shingles would result in a darker roof color. However, the proposed roofing would result in a similar style as seen on the adjacent Victorian structure located at 2902 Norman Street. The roof pitch and decorative elements of the structure would remain. As such, it is staff's opinion that the proposed replacement with new composite shingles would not deteriorate historic features and would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Of note, staff recommends that the roofing material not wrap at the gable ends as proposed by the applicant. It is the opinion of staff that wrapping would alter the visual appearance such that the structure will stand out within the surrounding neighborhood. Figure 11 in the staff report provides a collage of neighboring structures, all of which do not have the proposed wrapping. It is staff's opinion that the project is consistent with the community design, natural, cultural, and scenic resources, and housing sections of the general plan, as the proposed project would preserve the existing housing stock and result in external modifications compatible with neighboring visual structures within the historic district. Additionally, the project is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance sections 1049, Site Plan Review, and 10410, Historic Buildings in the City, as well as the Development Guide with regards to design guidelines for historic buildings. The city has reviewed this request and has determined that it is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Sections 15301 and Section 15331, in that it involves the repair to an existing structure that will result in no expansion of the existing use, and that the project would complete the maintenance and reconstruction in a manner consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings in support of SPR 23-06, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's report on SPR 23-06.
Thank you very much for that report. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Lepa?
I just have a couple. So with the fascia and the rakeboard, will they be reviewed or by us prior to the approval? Or is that just going to be through staff?
I'm sorry. Could you restate the question, Commissioner?
Oh, just the detail work. I was wondering if it's going to come before us or if it just gets approved through you guys, or it's just a straight replacement of the detail work that's there now?
My understanding is a straight replacement.
Perfect. Okay, great.
Yes. If what they propose before us when they come in for their building permit, if it deviates, we would then come back to the commission for approval of that.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. And then, I believe it referenced the windows and siding in the report, so that will come before us, or?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, good. And then, go ahead.
Just on that point, are you talking about the ones that have been replaced with more modern windows, as mentioned on page 3?
Correct. Yes. I just wanted to know if that was still going to come before us. And then, the gutters, they're going to use the OG-style one on the last page of Attachment 2?
That is staff's recommendation.
Perfect. Okay. And then, and the wrapping of the roof will not be happening on the new one?
That is staff's recommendation not to wrap.
And the ventilation recommended will be completed by the roofing company that's doing the work?
Yes. And I believe they are here this evening, and they can answer more questions on that.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter, did you have questions?
Yes, I do. I also wanted to congratulate you guys on a really awesome staff report. Very thorough, educational. Thank you. Kristen, your name's on it, so you get all the credit. I did want to, before we get too deep into this, I wanted to get a little bit of clarification because there is some different wording on this. So on page 1 in the request, it says that the rakeboard, fascia, and soffit with the same material. And bear with me on this because there's a lot of different wording in here that I kind of wanted to get clarification on before we get too far. So you've got same material on page 1. And then, on page 4, under project description, second bullet point, it changes to like material and style. I just want to make sure we capture all these just for... On page 7, goal G, we're once again like materials in that first paragraph. Goal I, once again, like materials. So we've got some consistency there. Let's see here. Page 11, last paragraph, still like material. Now, on page 13, first paragraph, we change to similar styles. We have three separate descriptions. And then, also, on the next page, 14, last paragraph, we're back to like materials. And then, on page 15, we're back to same materials under item number 3, that first paragraph. We switch back to same style and materials. Then, under item 4, their first paragraph, we're back to similar style and materials. And then, on page 16, item number 3, we have like material again. And then, on Attachment 1, the condition of approval, item number 1, we're back to same material. And also, on item number 2, same material. So I just want to make sure that we have consistent wording, whichever we decide, you know, whether it's like, same, or similar. I'd like to see it be consistent throughout the document, however we decide to do that. And I can give that a list to you also to make sure that we have all those items covered.
Yeah. Vice Chair, if I can just make a quick comment on behalf of staff. Basically, it's supposed to read, and I feel comfortable that at least we said it correctly in the conditions of approval, it's supposed to be same material. In other words, it's supposed to be wood, not vinyl, not composite, not some other kind of material. So just think of it as, we can go through and we can correct the staff report as well, that it would read the same instead of similar or like.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
We're consistent throughout the document. Thank you. I'll hold on to anything else until after the... Thank you.
Commissioner Keeney, any questions of staff?
I just had a couple of questions regarding... In the staff reports, it recommended not to have the shingles wrap, but it's not specified. So does that require a finding, or can we consider just emphasizing that and the Attachment 1 recommended conditions of approval? And pretty much the same thing for the required ventilation. Does that require it's a finding, or is it allowable for the commission just to specify that in the conditions of approval? I just want to know if we need to have a specific finding in addition to the ones you've already made.
So let me start with the ventilation. That is a flaw in the construction of the building. Ventilation, and I believe we're talking about ventilation that would be under the soffits, absolutely required for ventilation, for positive ventilation of the attic. If you don't, you can have the accumulation of water and over time, dry rot, and decomposition of the wood materials within the structure. So I don't think findings are necessary for that. It's not really visible. These would be the small...
So we can just rely on the attachment that is from our building official, Mr. Horstfall?
Yes, correct. Yeah. And then, your other question had to do with the wrap. Yes, staff would highly recommend that the commission, if the commission agrees with staff, that we preclude any use of wrap. The wrap that was on the porch, that portion, that re-roofed portion of the porch was done without permit. So it never came before us, the wrap that was on that other portion, that now exists on the house.
And so that doesn't require a finding, just if we choose to? That would be in addition to the recommended conditions of approval?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, any questions of staff?
A couple of questions. I just would like to know if you have photographs of the specific details that you want to be the same, so that after the project is done, you can ensure that the changes made were, in fact, the same. Do you have photographs like that, or could you have photographs of those details that you want to be the same?
Staff conducted a site visit and took photos, pretty detailed photos, I hope. And a few of them are on the wall behind you, but we do have a collection of photos identifying fascia, soffits, rakeboards.
I guess the other question about the roof is a matter of curiosity. How old is the present roof that's to be replaced? Do we know the date?
Unfortunately, for the upper roof, staff is unaware. For the lower portion of the roof, that was done in 2008 or 2009.
Do we have any information about what roofing materials were used in 1880 or the late 1800s?
There is actually a photo. You can see it behind Commissioner Carter. It's on the bottom left. The wood shingles were covered over with modern shingles, but they're very deteriorated at this time.
So we couldn't use wood shingles now? Is that right?
And I wouldn't think we would want to with the fire danger.
That was the question.
Yeah. I think wood shingles would be almost prohibited, wouldn't they not?
Yes.
Yeah. They're prohibited for fire safety.
And staff would just add that at the time of permit application, when they submit the materials, that's when the planning division staff would look at what it is they're going to replace for the soffit and the fascia board and everything.
Great. Anything else, Commissioner?
Again, just curiosity, whether there's any kind of roof material that looks like but is not wood shingles, that would give the appearance of wood shingles?
Staff is not aware, but we do have a roofing contractor available that could probably answer that question for you.
It's really hard to simulate wood shingles. There's only one shingle out there which would be a presidential shingle.
Oh, they'll call on you, and then you can go up to the podium. Sorry. I just looked at you.
One more clarifying question. Did you have a question?
I'm waiting for staff. So, okay. So one more. You're good, Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner Keeney?
I just wanted to be clear. The roof over the porch is not part of the project. The roof is over the house, the residence.
All of the roof on the existing house, so the upper and lower portions. The only portion or roof that is not considered is the garage.
The garage. Okay. Thank you.
I have just one question. Throughout the report, we talk about the color of the roof is going to change, it's going to be a little bit darker. And I guess my question was, for the commission's benefit, there must be a spectrum, then, of how much darker, how much lighter? And I'm not sure what the reference point would be. What do we draw on? And are we going, are we concerned about it being darker than way back in the 1800s version, or what's on the building now? I was a little bit confused as to how that works and how it might relate to the Secretary of Interior standards.
I'll try and take a shot at it. Basically, what you have is you have a number of layers on this house that's been re-roofed, the original roof being wood. We're not going to allow, you know, wood shingles in a very high fire hazard severity zone that Placerville is in. But we have no spectrum of color. So that's something that we just didn't have information on that. So we did, or staff looked at other houses' roofs in the area and found that it wasn't anything that's going to stand out. So, but that's the extent of it.
Okay. So that would probably be our objective criteria for deciding that, oh, what you're choosing is too dark. It's okay if you go darker, but if it's going to be such, if it's going to stick out like it was pink, it could almost be too light. That would be our objective measure? That's what I was trying to get, some sort of an objective...
I would also say that the lower roof, that is a little newer, that is darker than the roof on the upper second floor. So the proposed is more closely related to the lower portion of the roof.
Okay. Very good. If there are no other questions of staff by commissioners, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant or their agent to address the commission on the project. I think there's somebody in the audience?
No, you're fine.
In case we have any questions for you?
Go ahead.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Donnie with Mountain Roofing.
Okay. Terrific. Then, questions of the, this is the roofing agent, I believe?
Yes.
And can you turn the microphone up toward... Yes, there you go.
Is that better?
Yes. And there you go. Super. I'll get started. I'm just going to ask a very quick question. You've heard the discussion about the ventilation and all that. That's going to happen. You can affirm that that's going to be happening?
Yes.
Okay. Great. That's all I needed to know. So Commissioner Keeney can start us off.
I have a follow-up to that. What type of ventilation there are? Were different options shown, both in the staff report and, let's see, we received as Attachment 4, a diagram, this is from our building official, Gregory Horstfall. There's different ways to ventilate. What system have you chosen?
I believe we're using, it's called an O'Hagan-style roof vent because the existing house has no E-block venting like your traditional homes do. So these are vents you put down low and you put them up high. It's a 60/40 split. So you put 60% down low for air intake and 40% up high for exhaust. And they're a very low-profile vent. They match the color of the shingles.
And so you're not going to put in like a gable vent, the option that was shown on this diagram?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Nor, you won't need a can vent or a power vent on the roof?
No.
Okay. And to get back to something that Commissioner Friend alluded to, I appreciate that you've chosen a Cool Roof product. There is some energy savings there. This is a new technology. These shingles aren't traditional asphalt shingles, but for a couple of reasons, yeah, why such a dark color? I'm not sure I'm comfortable with the dark color. And also, you know, for an energy savings standpoint, the lighter color you can go with, the more reflectivity you've got. So can you tell us why the, I think, why the dark color shingle was chosen?
I believe the owner picked the color. We don't typically pick the color for them, but they're all Cool Roof colors. So, I mean, they even have a black shingle that is called a Cool Roof color. So every color that he was given, they're all Cool Roof. I don't have any answers to why he picked a darker color.
That was just in the, you're here to represent them in this project?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I've got. Thank you.
And the chair would note again that the applicant is actually not present, so the commission could ask the applicant questions, which, again, reminds, just reminded the staff to encourage applicants to attend the hearings on projects they bring forth, particularly in the historic district. That's just my own side note. Commissioner Lepa, questions?
I just have a question you may or may not know the answer to. The plastic that is over an outdoor patio, will that be removed with the replacement of this roof? Like, is it there because the roof is leaking? Are you aware?
I don't have an answer to that.
You're not sure? Okay. Same harping, I'm assuming, is related to the leakiness of the roof.
Commissioner Carter, questions?
No, no real questions, but I would like to echo the sentiment that the OG decorative gutter, thank you, and the drip as opposed to the drape. Those, I would support both of those in the conditions of approval. I'll hold other comments for now.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Yes. Again, I suppose speculation, but could it be that the reason for the color proposed for the top is that it would be consistent with the color of what's over the roof in the front porch area?
If I was guessing, I would say that's correct, but...
And how much would it cost to change the color of the roof?
There is no cost change.
Of the porch and have it be compatible with the top?
We're doing them all, so there's no cost for color.
Is there any reason why it can't be the lighter shade?
Nope.
Okay. The other question is, since we're concerned about fire and using wood shingles, there are vents that block out ash and sparks for just that same reason. Up in Lake Tahoe, the building code stops open vents. There, they can afford to have vents closed because it's the cooler climate, but that's a major cause of fires. Does the embers get inside?
Yes.
Do you have anything that you can put in there for those?
I believe there is a product called Vulcan vents. What they do is when the heat comes, they close. They don't allow any embers to come in there. So I have to check and see if the O'Hagans make something similar to that. I think they do. I do know they are more costly.
If staff could make a comment, because the city is in with a very high fire hazard severity zone, all building construction is required to be consistent with the wildland urban interface building code requirements. So it's nothing that needs to be considered. It's a requirement of their building permit.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Just one more. Will you be doing the replacement of the fascia and rakeboard and such, the wood detailing work? Okay. Great.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for coming this evening. Don't leave in case another question comes up. Anyone else in the audience who wish to comment on this project? Mr. Drobisch has questions or comments?
Hello. I'd like to introduce myself now. Good evening. Welcome, all of you, all at one time. Nice. As for the dark color, it could be mimicking slate, which was used historically. You know, the hangman's tree had a slate roof. So the color could also be brown to mimic wood shingles, which you really don't want anymore. The vents, I think, are going to all have to be fire-rated, so you get limited. You can ventilate the soffits. Lot of work if the soffit is going to stain or going to cut it in. It'd be interesting if what was recommended is the roofing vents, if you can ask them for an image of it. But if it's painted the same color as the roof, it'll probably just disappear. As for the stacks, existing stacks, I'd like to see them stay because they really add a flavor of historical time period. You can put new roof jacks underneath them and just re-top them with the old ones, if that's possible. One of them looks like it's really close to a valley and it needs to be moved. So it was mentioned, the architectural detail I would like to see remain when everything's done. If there's so much rot, if they went over a wood shake roof, who knows what's in there? Rotten rafters, you name it. And if they have to start, it takes so long to carefully try and pull trim off, and it just breaks. And you can't run to Home Depot and get the same thing. I know a local guy that can reproduce all kinds of special trims. He did all the replacement trim for the hangman's tree. He's right here in town. But I would recommend you get close-up pictures of the architectural detail, maybe with a tape measure in there, so that it roughly comes back to the same dimensions also. And if there's dental detail, whatever the detail is, that gets returned. I would place a condition that you don't get a final until signed off that everything is same for same, or 90%, 95%, whatever you guys say. That's the only way I can see having teeth in it. Roof jacks. Yeah... Roof jacks, yeah, and don't allow the modern decorative rake and ridge, um, shingles, what you're calling wrap. It's just not appropriate for this age of home. It's, it's not appropriate. The OG gutter is more architecturally appropriate than the fascia style. I think the fascia style's more efficient, easier to clean and such, but the OG is the one that should, of those two that should be chosen. And then the, the question too is, like, if there's, you know, there's declared rot. If it really gets into the framing members, then who's going to take over and make sure it's same-for-same? Because you can't replace, you know, that's probably sugar pine rafters in there and you can't get those really. But, some questions there. And just consider a, a condition for, you get your final when it's like-for-like done.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to staff or, uh, to commission for discussion and possible action. Uh, just a note, in terms of the replacement of like-for-like on, on that very last comment, getting into the timbers and whatnot, that only applies to what's visible from the street if, if I understand correctly.
That is correct.
Yeah, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter, you could go steal girders if you wanted to.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, just for that clarification. So, uh, the chair will entertain discussion on this item and hopefully get us to a motion. I only have, frankly, one issue on the condition of approvals, um, as they're written, and I think we're gonna be adding a few, and that is on item number nine. It says, "All construction shall be limited to Monday through Friday, seven to seven, and no construction permitted on the weekends." And I, I know we have done that with commercial enterprises. I am a little bit troubled that if I'm working on, if I have a house, then I can't work on my house on, at least Saturday. And so, that, that bothers me. I, I don't support that, that condition's too restrictive. It strikes me as the condition we use for, um, commercial applications. So, I would hope that my fellow commissioners would see that possibly we could relax that, at least to allow work to be done on, on Saturdays. But, and frankly, I, I, again, if I was building a place or repairing, I'd be working, you know, whenever I had the opportunity. And with weather, you know, sometimes, boy, the rain's coming, I got a window here, man, I gotta get that, those shingles down while, while there's no rain, et cetera. So, I, I'm concerned about that condition. That's just my opinion.
Can we, uh, ask the contractor to come back up real quick?
Told you.
Do you, do you have interest in, in working on a Saturday? Would that be something that you want us to change?
Not typ, not typically.
You're, you're gonna work Monday through Friday anyway, correct?
Typically Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
I guess...
Commissioner Smith?
One comment is that in light of what Mr. Grobich said, it makes some sense when he explains about the slate roof. That was period consistent, but this kind of material has some texture to it, almost looks, if you know what I mean. It's hard to tell from here, but it's, it's kind of gritty where it has a, kind of like glitter look. Uh, is there a kind of material that would be more slate in appearance? That'd be dark like this?
Not unless you went to like a synthetic product.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Could you, and I'm just gonna ask you to repeat that only because I didn't have the microphone on it for the public record.
Is it not, you, you can't get a more slate-looking product unless you go to one of the synthetic, synthetic shakes?
Yeah, okay.
And which adds a lot of cost.
Sure, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Other commissioners, uh, discussion, possible action. Again, I'll make another comment. I am comfortable, as staff was, that the color that's chosen is not so significant or substantial that it would detract from the historical, uh, feature of the home itself, nor be in contrast with other buildings, uh, in, in the district. I know that may not sit well with you, Commissioner, but I, I'm, I can certainly live with it. Personally, I would like to have the applicant here so we can ask questions as to why you chose and, and are you willing to possibly consider a different color, but, uh, we are precluded from that option. But I, I'm comfortable with where staff is with, with the color. And I, I would approve the project essentially as conditioned, with the exception of one or two items I can anticipate might be coming. Is there anyone who's more discussion or willing to make a motion perhaps?
Let's see, so, I'm com, I, I agree, I'm comfortable with the color overall, especially with the, um, staff detail comparing similar properties in the area, um, that it's within line of, of the overall look of the, um, the neighborhood. And I think, and that, that goes back to my original question, it's just that it's clear that there's gonna be no wrapping. They will be adding the ventilation that kind of glides in with the overall look and doesn't stand out glaringly. Um, and that the gutters will be the OG style. And then, um, as far as the rakeboard and fascia, it sounds like we have a handle on what's there and what's going to be replaced is going to be the same. So, do we need to add, so you're comfortable that all of those details are clear in the conditions as listed?
I could certainly see you adding a condition for the wrapping, if that would make you more comfortable.
Okay.
I might also add the condition for the, the, I, I know the, the contractors said they're gonna do it. They already affirmed that, but I think, so then it's an easy matter to put in as a condition as per the planning department's, was it building department? Building department's recommendation, right?
The ventilation?
Yeah.
I feel the same way.
Building department's recommendation, since, since there's no, uh, concern about that, so it's an easy one to, to add in there. And then to specify the OG, right, we're, yeah. Since we've identified these, just specify them, I think it's easy, non-controversial.
Yeah, I just wanted to make those minor amendments, uh, that you've been discussing, uh, and, and just, uh, make sure it's very clear in our, uh, conditions of approval, I think they could be added easily of under, let's see, one, uh, six, uh, proposed alternate gutter materials, uh, just a semicolon, maybe, um, and say five-inch OG style as, you know, that, that's what was shown in attachment two, but again, it just makes it very clear that that's what we intend for them to install. And then the next line down, number two, um, soffits, I'd also like to insert the, uh, word decorative. So, soffits, comma, decorative fascia and rakeboard removed. Again, I just wanna be very clear, uh, what it is that we intend for them to do. I, I think we're all in agreement, uh, what this project, uh, will be, but, uh, insert that word decorative. Uh, rakeboard removed, um, shall be replaced with the same style of material. And then, a second sentence, uh, shingles shall not be wrapped at gable ends, uh, per page eleven of staff report. Again, I, um, we, we see that, uh, I did walk the neighborhood. I saw one house that had, uh, the wrapped shingles along. It wasn't at the gable ends, but it, it's not common up there at all, and, uh, I think this porch roof is the only other place I saw it. But, uh, again, just to be, uh, very clear that, uh, we, we are following up on the staff recommendation. And if, I, I wanna belabor the color. It's, the, the color proposed is very similar to what's over the porch, but it's a big change from the, um, rest of the house. I had kinda come at this, I took a look at the Cool Roof, uh, website and, um, you know, appreciate that this is a reflective product. It saves some energy. But, uh, when Commissioner Friend said, uh, the, referenced the other nearby buildings, I thought back to what's in the staff report. There's a, um, collection of photos, and now I can't find my staff report, give me just a second. But there's a collection of nearby houses, and, uh, none of them have a dark roof. I think, uh, mostly they're, they're brown, uh, gray, and so now I'm, I'm starting to wonder if, if that dark, uh, color wouldn't be a little... It's a big change from what is there now, although, uh, as, as we know, that's not at all original, um, or authentic to the, uh, original structure from the eighteen eighties. So, uh, I'd like to just talk about that a little bit more. Would, uh, any of the other commissioners support specifying that they choose a lighter color, uh, such as, there's an amber and there's also a gray material that's in the same line? Yeah, Commissioner Friend, you've got that, what, page, page twelve?
Page twelve. I mean, part of me, part of me says, you know, the risk of not attending the, 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 the hearing on your project is that the commission may in fact, uh, mandate something that you don't, you just don't get a chance to comment on. I do know from these six pictures, you have a wide range of colors, ranging from a darkish brown to kind of a tan, a couple of tans. One's, uh, kind of a very gray, so it reminds me of my tabby cat. Another one is more bluish. This one here is, is a little bit darker, so, I, truthfully, I am ambivalent, except that, you know, I'm, obviously I can't suppress my irritation, the applicant's not here. I'm ambivalent, I, I, I'm happy to go along with staff's opinion that the color chosen is, is, is okay and doesn't cause us any kind of conflict. But, um, I will defer to my fellow commissioners, and if there's a consensus that you wanna go with something lighter, I certainly will not be, uh, in opposition. Commissioner Smith?
One of the, I said, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Keen's concerns. The thing I would note is that those other houses are much newer. When it comes to eighteen eighty, it's hard not to be newer. And we had two different kinds of roofs of that era. One was the wood shingles and the other was slate, um, as, uh, Mr. Grobich pointed out. So, the darker color does look consistent with slate, as was used on the slate quarry. And you just cited one building, but there are others in town from that era. The Marsh House is, to my knowledge, the oldest in town, about seventeen nineties, or eighteen nineties, uh, on Sacramento Street. One of the oldest buildings in town, also Victorian, uh, farmhouse style. So, that's why I feel comfortable now.
Does it have a slate roof?
No.
Oh, okay.
But it, they've all been modified. Roofs don't last for, you know, that many years or decades, a hundred years. So, we really don't know what the original structure was. But I think that's correct, that you typically had shingles, uh, either wood or slate. And, and the other was tin. Tin was popular up until about nineteen hundred. So, I think that's a diff, that's why I feel comfortable now, that I didn't feel before by taking that into account.
So, if I read, if I read the group, um, I think four of us would probably say it's okay as is. Your preference would be something lighter. Certainly you could, uh, and I would not stand in the way of something lighter personally, and the other commissioners may not either. So, I think that's just something that'd be floated in a motion. Happy, happy to, the chair is more than happy to have that as, as part of a motion, so.
Does her comment? Great to look at the website to see the colors that you're recommending. I'm sorry? The colors that you're recommending were what?
Uh, right, there are options, uh, for, in the same product line, and, uh, the contractor indicated there wouldn't be a, a change in the cost. So, you know, we don't know, well, I, gosh, I think there might be evidence if it had been slate at some point, but I think it, um, every, the indications we have is that it was a wood shingle roof, maybe originally.
You are, you are correct. I think we, we can safely assume that the original shingles were made of wood on the roof. I'm only suggesting that if we're looking for something consistent with that time period, slate would, would be one of them. That's all.
You had mentioned amber as a color that you had seen on there?
Yeah, amber would be the closest to the, the wood, uh, shingle. And then, there, there's also a gray color, I can't remember what, uh, they, they called it exactly, but it, it was gray in tone, which is closer to what we have today, so it wouldn't be, um, such a startling change. There's a, you know, a couple, honestly, looking at the pictures in the staff report on page twelve, I'm seeing, you know, there's three of them that are brownish. It's kinda hard to tell with the shadows, um, how dark the other, uh, roofs are, but, um...
You could give them a choice too. You could say, you know, a, a, a grayish or amberish tone, right? As opposed to the dark?
Right, I, I don't wanna...
The one that's chose is almost black, right?
Right, it's, it's difficult since they're not here to speak to why they chose that color. Um, I, you know, on another house, I think it might be very striking, uh, a certain look, that maybe that's what they're going for. But I, you know, we don't know what they're gonna do with the rest of the house. So, that's why I was thinking maybe it would be more appropriate to stay in the same, uh, kind of tone as what the, uh...
The wood.
They've had for years, and, or what was maybe originally on there. So, um, I would like to, uh, also add that. So, um, anyone else wanna comment on that, have any preference?
I don't think you're gonna have any opposition if you include this part of the...
Yeah, with the absence of the applicant to defend their color choice, I'm, it's not a hill I'm willing to die on, so I'll, I'll go with whatever you think is appropriate, I'm fine, I'm ambivalent.
You know, while you're working on that, uh, while I appreciate the contractor's going to be doing the work on this, I, I still don't like condition nine as written, I, I just don't. I, I, on a matter of principle, for, for private residences, that, that's really my, my issue. Something could come up, and the way this is written, it says, "All construction shall," and so it's, it's a hundred percent limiting, and I, I just, I don't think it's necessary. The, the commercial, the commercial projects, I don't have an issue with that, but I, I do have an issue on principle with, with the private residences.
Does staff have any opposition to changing that? Is there anything, any rule governing construction hours for residential?
That's our standard limitations that we put on, um, building permits. But, it's one of those things where it typically would apply to a licensed contractor, wouldn't apply to an individual homeowner who's allowed to work on their house wherever and whenever they like, as long as they're not a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Yeah, so, that, and that really, I think, is the, is the key there up here, 'cause I could certainly concur that, okay, all contracted work or whatever. And, um, so, if we just added something and said, "No construction," you know, the nuisance is, is the point. But again, I, I, I just know the few times that I've had the pleasure of being able to build my own house, right? And I worked on it whenever I had, every second I could, and I certainly would not have wanted to have been restricted, you know, to, to Monday through Friday, seven to seven. That's all I'm saying, so.
Well, something that occurs to me with that is, uh, it's, it's one thing, as, as your hypothetical neighbor, for you to get out there and start working on the roof, but, uh, if the, the crew shows up on a Saturday, uh, yeah, that, that could be a nuisance. And so, it's, it's, it's a lot different when you have the homeowner, and maybe a homeowner and one or two other people, but, uh, you know, a, a construction crew that comes out can be, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but I'm envisioning the whole crew goes out there and you just wanna get it done, right? You have them on the job site and it doesn't matter what day of the week, it's, it, everybody's out there, it's all hands on deck, literally, so...
How about, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna delay this, how about inserting the word "constructed" between "all" and "construction"? So, all contracted construction, right? All contracted, right? So, that, the contractor is gonna be limited to Monday through Friday, seven to seven. That doesn't, that, that doesn't preclude the individual themselves from going out there and doing something. That's my point. So, all contracted construction, that's very specific. I think that gets to your point, right, about the crew and all that?
Yeah.
Could we, could we live with that? I would hope.
Here's a concern that I have. I think it's important in what we do that there be consistency so that people can rely on it. And, and what the staff has said is that that's consistent, uh, that's been applied to everyone. Right now, we know that right, we're, have a late-in-the-season rainstorm, but what kind of contingency is gonna happen where we're gonna have some stoppage, some emergency, where you're gonna have to come in to work on the weekends or late at night? It's hard to imagine, but the staff, my question is, if that happens, if there was some emergency, a water pipe they're about to replace breaks, and they've got to work on the weekend or late at night, would there be reinforcement action?
Yeah, I would just add that, um, it's my understanding that this is just a standard condition that we just put on construction projects, but it's not, it's not codified anywhere in, in city ordinance. But to get to your point, uh, yeah, staff would not go after somebody because they're doing repair work on their structure to prevent further damage because of storm or some other issue.
So, I appreciate your, your concern and what you've experienced in the past. It's just that I think that for the respect, uh, that the public would have for what we do, we need to be as consistent as possible and not deviate, uh, unless it's absolutely necessary. And what the staff is suggesting is, if that happened and somebody, separate from the contractor, the owner wanted to do some work, nobody's gonna complain from the staff.
And I concur, and I... And I concur, and I think what I've realized in my many years on, on the commission, and again, my recollection is this provision almost always applied to commercial projects. I think that it's quite possible to suggest, suggest that the language we have is deficient in that it could be refined slightly to meet the intent, which is, is to not disturb neighborhoods, you know, on the weekends, but at the same time to not also prevent an individual from working on their own property, you know, when they want outside of those hours. So I don't, I think by adding the word "contracted" and perhaps suggesting to staff in a separate item that we carry that language forward subsequent, it makes this language, which we have been using forever, I think it makes it even better, refines it a little bit. So I'm, I'm still comfortable with it. Again, not a hill to die on, but I would hope, I think my, my fellow commissioners can understand where I'm coming from, that yes, the contractor, the crew and all that, the disruption of neighborhoods, et cetera, particularly on the weekends, we want to, we want to preserve or minimize that, but we don't want to restrict an individual from being able to work on their property. So that's just something I think that could be added or refined in, in the actual language on the permit.
If staff can make just an additional recommendation for, for the commission's consideration, maybe you look at reducing the hours of construction activity on the Saturday. Maybe not so early in the morning and not so late in the evening.
Yeah.
People can sleep in.
I thought we, I thought we had that, Pierre. I could have swore we've, we had somewhere, it was Monday through Friday, and then Saturday limited to whatever, no construction on Sunday. So many projects under the bridge, so it's, it's hard to, hard to recall, but we have the flexibility to do this. We're not bound by this. We have total flexibility to make adjustments to this. So I would say for, for now, I would ask that we simply add the word "contracted" in this particular item, and then we can consider taking this up for refinement for other projects. That's where I'm at. Is anyone interested in possibly making a motion on this item?
I do actually have a question. Now that I've taken a moment to look at the different colors available that do sort of more call to a wood tone, available in the cool style roof, I would be open to giving an option. There's four different colors. Basically, every other color, almost every other color available looks more like wood than the one that was selected of the Cool Night Sky. So there, I'm not sure how to, if you guys can look at this or what, but like there's.
Would you be okay just, I didn't write them all down, I was just going to say, give them options for something, so brown or gray in color, so then they can choose.
Literally every other option on there is brown or gray, except the Cool Night Sky.
So you want to say anything but what you chose?
Anything.
That's kind of.
Anything other than what you chose?
That is kind of what I, I am saying, in the sense that every other option besides the Sierra or Shasta White, I'm sorry, are more of a wood tone. Sierra Gray is a gray tone, and Oyster Shell are gray, but the rest of them, the Amber, the Mojave, the Forest Brown, and the Sand Castle, all have more of a similar tone to wood. So if we wanted to sort of point to that, that look of the original while allowing for the modern material that is more efficient and safer and things like that, I would be open to that.
And now that you've seen those, you're, you're leaning more toward the brown as opposed to, what we have now is a gray. So I had proposed either brown or gray to give them, either they could go with a wood or they could go with something like, more like what they have today.
Yeah, I, I follow what you're saying, yeah.
What's your, your preference?
Well, now that I've seen the options, I was sort of like, it's not something, again, that I'm totally was passionate about upon reading it, but now that I've reviewed the other colors, I could see if we were to go towards a brown tone, that it would kind of pay homage to the original structure wall, like I said, using the modern materials and allowing for a reasonable replacement, which, on my quick look, were the Amber, the Mojave, which is more of a, kind of a brighter brown. Forest Brown or Sand Castle, there's three, maybe four others that are gray in color. And then the Cool Night Sky, obviously, we have all seen what that one looks like.
Still sounds like you're back to anything but what you chose.
I mean, kind of, except that I think my preference would be to go to one of these four that have brown tones, to kind of point to the wood.
Put in a motion.
Cool.
I do, just want to concur. I like the reasoning that's used, is principled.
Okay, so I think I've captured everything in my notes except for how to phrase the roof ventilation.
I don't, I don't think we need to.
We don't need to, okay. We don't have to, okay, then never mind. That was earlier that I wrote it, okay. So then I will, I'll take a shot at the motion then, so excuse my brain for being a little rusty.
Pretty sharp so far.
To, okay, so I will make a motion to adopt the staff record as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the SPR 23-06 request as listed on page 16 and 17 of the staff report, and conditionally approve SPR 23-06 located at 2913 Norman Street based on the information and findings included in the staff report. And then I will have updates to the recommended conditions, which would include changing item 1.4 to proposed roofing material duration, I'm not sure if duration's, I think duration is just a reference to the type.
Duration, cool.
Okay, cool, remove Cool Night Sky and give the options of Amber, Mojave, Forest Brown, or Sand Castle under item 1.6, to clarify that the five-inch OG-style gutters will be used as shown in attachment 2 of the staff report. And number 2, to add the word decorative prior to fascia, and add a sentence saying that the shingles shall not be wrapped at gable ends as recommended in the staff report. And on number 9, to add the word contracted prior to construction on, and that's it.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second by Commissioner Keeney.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Yeah, discussion on the motion.
On item number 1, adopt the staff report as part of the public record. If we could add, as amended, changing all instances of like or similar to same in the staff report in the public record.
Good question.
I am agreeable to that change.
And the second of the motion accepts the friendly amendment?
Oh, second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Call the question, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Friend?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Terrific. Motion carries. The project is approved with the condition as specified, there is a 10-day, 10-day appeal process. Thank you for coming in and helping us out with that.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to item.
Vice Chair, if staff could ask for a quick five minutes.
Certainly. Welcome back, everyone. Continued items. We have one item under 11.1, approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of April 4, 2023.
So at the previous planning commission meeting, the draft minutes for April 4, 2023 were pulled from the consent calendar. Once pulled, planning commission discussed condition of approval number 2 for site plan review 97-04R for Our Savior Episcopal Church regarding the color of the deck railing, and if it was the intention of the motion to have both the replacement railing and the existing railing that is visible from Coloma Street to be white in color. Planning commission directed staff to review the recording of the meeting to clarify the motion and bring the advisement minutes back to the planning commission for approval. Staff reviewed the recording and has revised the minutes to include the exact language proposed by Commissioner Keeney in her motion, which stated that the railing will be white in color to coordinate with the existing railing on the front of the building and the other facade treatments, which are also white in color. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the minutes as revised.
And just for clarity, thank you, Kristen, just for clarity, that was Roman numeral 3, item number 2. That's where that language is?
Yes.
And that's, that's what was corrected?
That is correct.
So with that, possibly get a, a motion to approve the minutes of April 4?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
I'm an abstain.
And I have one abstention, okay. Thank you very much, and good work on staff with that item. Okay, there we go with that. All right, oh, let's see. Next item on the agenda is item 12, 12.1, under new business, the election of officers for 2023, chair and vice chair per Article 5 of the planning commission bylaws. So the first regular meeting on or after March 1st, where we have all five commissioners present, and we will select the officers for the coming year. So whose goose wants to be chair?
Well, Commissioner Friend, I would be honored to nominate you to be our official chair for one-year term.
Well, I would be honored to serve as long as my head remains attached. I'm happy to, to provide that service.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Keeney for vice chair.
I will second that nomination. I will move the nominations be closed. Commissioner Keeney, are you willing to serve in that capacity?
I am, thank you very much. Commissioner Lepper?
Thank you.
I would entertain then a motion to the nominations be closed and the slate be accepted as presented. Could I have that motion?
So moved.
Second on that?
Aye.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, terrific. Often one of our most difficult things to get done in the year, to get all five of us present at one time. Thank you very much for that, and I am honored at the selection. Item 12.2, review amendment of the planning commission bylaws. This is an opportunity, I think, we take generally at the time that we elect officers to also offer for all commissioners, and particularly newer commissioners, to revisit the bylaws, make suggestions for edits and so on and so forth. So we'll, the chair will just go ahead and open up that up for discussion, but note that Commissioner Lepper has spent some time apparently going through the bylaws and has a number of suggested changes. So I know there's going to be some discussion, I'm going to go ahead and defer to you, Commissioner, to lead us off.
Yes, I did go through, actually, there's no significant content changes that I made, but I tightened up a lot of the language, replaced, or took out a lot of redundancy, and just sort of did, I edited in my past life, so I, I put my brain back into that. I presented a copy to each of the commissioners with tracked changes so that you can see each change that I made, and I think that you'll see that there's, again, no content added. It's more either clarification, removal of redundancy, or grammatical updates that I have provided.
Did you present these to staff?
I sent them to Kristen today, and I believe staff, based on their comments, have had a chance to review them.
Okay, and does staff have any issues with the changes proposed, or they, they look, they, we could adopt them?
Yeah, Chair Friend, if I may, staff did have the opportunity, we did have enough time to review these comments. In fact, staff would like to thank Commissioner Lepper for the work she did here. It really improved, you know, the language of the bylaws. Staff only has one, one additional change, and that's on page 6, Article 10, item B as in Baker, where it says, "Chair calls on planning staff to..." We would just insert the word "Chair calls on city staff", so that it's clear that it's referring to city staff as opposed to some other staff. It's, it's fine throughout the rest of the document, but that's the only change that staff would recommend in addition to these, but these are all just excellent changes.
Thank you. I will add the additional detail that there's three places that I have highlighted where I thought that the language could be stronger or more clear, but I did not have time to go back through and suggest changes to that. I don't think that they necessarily need to be edited right now. It was just struck me as areas for improvement.
Where it's highlighted in yellow, what, what is?
That's what I was saying. So, for example, on 7A, I just, that wording was just confusing to me, the way it's written, but I, again, I don't think it's, needs to necessarily be changed. On page 6, I changed it to "related recommendations" rather than "necessary", and wasn't sure if that was clear on what it was, so I just kind of wanted to make sure that that was clear on, on what that meant. And on the final page, 7, I wasn't sure if we needed to keep the words "take under advisement" or sort of what that meant, because I thought that approving, conditionally approving, denying, or continuing were kind of the things that we do. So I wasn't sure if we needed to say "or take under advisement" or if that could be removed. So those were why those three are highlighted. I think we could approve them tonight without making significant changes to them, but that's why they're highlighted that way. I just never went back and suggested new language.
Yeah, I can't recall any time we've taken a project or an item under advisement. I, perhaps we have, but.
Or is that the same as?
Commission Acts 2.
That's sort of what my question.
I just wonder if that's like, you know, standard bylaw language?
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I just. When I, like I said, when I had added "continue" into there, because that is something that we have done after we discuss, I wasn't sure what "take under advisement" meant, so.
Yeah, because "continue", "continue" suggests that we're actually going to address it at a future date, whereas a "take under advisement" is almost a receive and file or note.
Well, up in, in number 1, close or continue the hearing, that's, is that what you're getting at?
Well, I thought, my brain went like this, okay, we, it comes back to us, and we either say, "We're not doing this hearing", or "This hearing is no longer going to happen", that's our one option. Then we, if we do continue to hear it, then we discuss it. And then after that, we either approve, deny, continue, or conditionally approve it. And fourth, it, it gets recommended to the city council, or we, we recommend it to the city council. So I sort of went through how our, our meetings can go, or our hearings can go. We can close or continue it, we can discuss it, approve and deny it, or recommend it to the city council.
I see, almost duplication between 1 and 3, because it seems like the Commission Acts 2, open public hearings, close public hearings, well, that's.
That's it right above, though.
Well, the Commission Acts 2, close a hearing, continue a hearing, we have, if you close, you have to open it, right?
Oh, but we're under order for each specific agenda item, so if you go to the top, then, you know, what we do first is open, and then after.
Item E.
Everything under E takes place.
Oh, I see. I need to take, I need, I'm sorry, I need to take it in con, okay, so, I'm sorry, I need to take this in context, right? Because then, right, what, what do we do when we finally, we're there, we're going to close it, we're going to continue it? I'm not sure about discuss, though, in that case.
I sort of saw it as a flow.
Because that, we've already kind of discussed it already, getting to this point, because that's, that suggests to me, okay, we've had all the discussion, now what are we going to do? We're going to close it, we're going to continue it, and we're going to either approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue. I don't think the "take under advisement" is correct.
Yeah, so we could just insert the word "or" prior to continue and remove or take under advisement.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
I think that would be, that was my question, I didn't understand when, at least in my time, when we would take something under advisement.
Ah, suppose it's, wait a minute, suppose it's something like a informational seminar, so they come and they tell us all about, you know, the latest regulations, so would we then be, does that come under Article 10, that order for each?
Mm-hmm. And again, that's why I didn't take it out, I was just, that's why it's highlighted.
I think, I, I think you're right.
So take, keep it in.
Thank you for giving me the example, but, yep. Happens all the time.
If it's helpful, just, just staff's quick review, "Take under advisement" seems to provide no, no value to that section, because I think this, this is referring to an actual action you're going to take on a project, where you have to take an action, not something that's a receive and file, not listen to a presentation or something for you, but where you're actually taking an action on, on a project, or it gets referred on to the city council. So, you know, really, I'm, I sort of scratched my head as well, "Take under advisement", I'm not really sure if that really adds anything.
Except here, as I was just educated, this is Article 10, order for each specific agenda item, and we can have informational, educational presentations as, in fact, it's on our agenda, right? It's a standing space on our agenda, so in that case, it does apply. So I, I think it's okay, actually.
Sounds good.
I don't think it harms anything. Like I said, yeah, keeping it is not going to hurt anything.
No harm, no foul. No harm, no foul.
I did add continue because that is an option that we, we take in that role.
Good catch on that.
Again, the one prior on page six, I changed necessarily to related, wasn't sure if that was clear. And then, like I said, Article seven A, it was just funky wording to me and I just never went back and rewrote it. So I think it could stay the way it is now, maybe get reviewed on the next round.
Commissioner Smith, I think you had your hand up, or no?
I commend you for your work and it's a great asset, thank you very much. The only suggestion was, I don't know if it's been made available, we have two people remaining in the audience. And even though they're editorial, simple things, they should have it available should they want it, so there's an option to comment if they, if they want to. But thank you, great work.
Staff would note that it is included in the binder on the back counter.
Thank you.
There we go.
Great.
Well, is there additional discussion or can we have a motion to adopt as presented? Oh, yeah, thank you very much, you're right, I have to do that. I'm failing in my duties, as new chair.
You'll get used to it.
Is anyone in the audience that wishes to address the commission on the item of the bylaws?
Is this the improvements you're talking about?
Yes, I see red.
Yeah, that's excellent, I love all the, the highlighting and all that. I would, so I would like to see added to Article seven A on page three, adding something per state law and Roberts Rules of Order is the order of business. I think it used to be in there, at least Roberts Rules of Order, and state law changes so fast nowadays, who knows? Just an idea there. And then in my reading, I came across a recent state law, I don't have the code section with me right now, but city councils now have to have, if they're a five-member body, three affirmative votes for passing ordinances, resolutions, and the spending of money. And since, I think you need legal analysis if the planning commission as a subset of the city council has to follow those rules too. Because under Article eight A, it says that your actions are by resolution. So if the council's resolutions have to be a three affirmative vote out of five, does that apply to planning commission? I wish I had brought the code section with me, but.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I thought about that too, on seven A, adding in a reference to Roberts Rules of Order, state law. But then it's referenced in 11E, that any question of procedure not clear in these rules are then decided in accordance with Roberts Rules. So I didn't add it because I thought it was kind of redundant since it's referenced later, but I agree with you that, again, that's, I thought that that wording was sort of funky in general and could be clarified.
That makes sense, because your, your bylaw should come first and then you say, if there's a dispute, what's the process? You know, do we go to Roberts first, do we go to state law first? Well, you can't violate state law, so. Just a suggestion, if it's already in there, it should work.
Yes, perfect, but thank you.
But I, I don't see, I like to see roll call vote for everything. You know, the voice will, it works here, but I'd just like to see a, a roll call for everything. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on these items? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll come back to staff. On seven A, Pierre on the top of page three, "Meetings shall be conducted in such manner as the chair directs." And with my new position as chair, I mean, what, what exactly does that mean? Because I, I've always believed that I was bound and should be to Roberts Rules and then whatever is controlled by state law and, and whatever code the city might have. So I'm not sure what lat, this sounds like the chair would have latitude, but it's not clear to me what latitude the chair would have, what manner could I direct?
I guess the chair does, you know, the chair chairs and runs the meeting. And so the chair can dictate, for example, the length of time that you would permit a speaker to speak. Typically, it's three minutes for, or an individual and five minutes for somebody representing a group, those kinds of things. The chair can, I think the chair has the ability maybe to, you know, change an item in the, in the agenda. But I'd have to look at that, but the, under, under Roberts Rules of Orders, it's the chair that's directing the meeting.
Okay, so that I could see, and I, and I do have, I do have an order, I know how I like to do things. When an item comes before, after the staff report, I like personally for the other commissioners to speak before the chairs speak. I don't always do that, but it's generally the, the way I operate, right? So I, I can see that. So I, I think I would be comfortable here, and I realize it's mentioned in 11, but I think a reference to Roberts Rules here would not hurt. You know, "such manner shall be, nonetheless be consistent with Roberts Rules and in accordance with applicable, applicable state law," right? So that just makes it really clear that the, the chair, he has, they have flexibility to do things certain way, but at the same time, there's also guardrail.
What about, what about this? "Meetings shall be conducted in such manner as the chair directs, as outlined by the rules herein set forth, comma, state law, comma, and Roberts Rules, and according to the regularly adopted agenda presented." Oh, and I was going to ask, and how would we phrase that it's been presented to the public as well? I can't think of the word.
I would be.
Posted, I guess, yeah, as presented and.
No, right, has to be adopted, because you can post the agenda, but we may make changes to the, the order of the agenda or take an item off and then we adopt that. So I, I think the adopted agenda language is okay.
Okay, so "meetings shall be conducted in such manner as the chair directs, comma, as outlined by the rules herein set forth, comma, state law, comma, and Roberts Rules, and according to the regularly adopted agenda."
Yeah, according to or any, just leave the language, any regularly adopted as it's here, just, you're just adding the other two items.
Yes, that's fine, I, the, any word kind of threw me off, but yeah, I don't have a strong opinion.
And, or how about "the regularly adopted?"
Right, that, the any kind of like made it feel like real fluffy. Yeah.
Pick any agenda.
Right.
It was adopted, I'm not saying when I adopted it, or it was adopted, but it was, and the, so the, the really kind of ties it back to the meeting itself.
That meeting, yeah.
So I would change any to the.
Yes.
Regularly adopted agenda.
Of course, did you guys capture those then? Yeah, that makes sense, perfect. Cool, yeah, that, exactly, that's exactly what I was looking for, is just a little tightening of that language, because it was fluffy to me when I read through it. And I agree that referencing rules multiple times is not hurtful. So then the other addition would be the word "city staff" on 10B. If you guys are comfortable with how I change necessarily to related on 10B four. And we are going to keep the word "or take under advisement" on 10F three. Okay, those were my, and then we could add under 11E, the, in accordance with the latest revised edition of state law or Roberts Rules of Order, just for clarification.
Can we get a motion on this?
I have one, oh.
Commissioner Carter.
Oh, yes, I actually would like to have a, I do have that government code that Mr. Drobish.
Oh, great.
Referenced, it's government code section 36936. And what it references is, as our bylaws are currently written, specifically in Article seven, section D, and again, in Article eight, section A, that any affirmative vote of no less than the majority of the voting members constituting a quorum. So as they're currently written, if we, if we have a quorum of three, a resolution could be passed with two votes and could conceivably be passed with one vote if there's abstentions, because it does list, say in here that the abstentions do not break a quorum. So what I would like to see us do, at least have a conversation about it, is to align ourselves with city council and have the, so I'm sorry, here we go, change those voting requirements to state a majority vote of the total membership of the commission in both of those sections. That way, we could still conduct business with a three-person quorum, it would just require all three members to vote in the affirmative. So it wouldn't stop us from conducting business with a three-person quorum, but it would take away the possibility of passing something with one or two votes. So I'd like to have a conversation possibly to align ourselves with city council procedures more closely on, in those two sections.
I always support that anyway, so.
Yeah, and then I had one more question after that discussion, if you don't mind, yeah?
Majority vote of the total membership, so majority vote of the total membership being five.
Exactly.
Whether you're president or not, the membership of the commission is five appointed members, right?
Yeah, I would like to see any official approval constitute the majority of the membership of the commission.
That kind of makes sense to me.
Yeah, and that would be, like I said, section, Article seven, section D, and also in Article eight, section A, would be amending both of those areas with that new wording.
I'd like to see that in print, I want to be sure that, there's a good reason that these bylaws were written the way they are and we've had them in place for a long time. So, you know, I appreciate your concern, but I would like to see that revision ahead of the next meeting. At this point, I'm not, I'm, I'm not comfortable adopting that without giving it its due consideration. As I said, that's a, I, I was troubled over that when I came on the commission about Article seven B and, let's see, and D. So I'd like to mull it over a little bit. Also, staff, do we need to have the city attorney review our bylaws or is that on us? Do we need to have our final version sent to her for review, just to make sure that we aren't somehow in conflict?
I think what staff would recommend is that we can continue this item, we'll show all the changes that have been at least approved in concept thus far, including the language that, that Commissioner Carter is recommending, and he can take final action and we can certainly run it by our city attorney.
That would be my preference. And all due respect, thank you very much for your consideration and your hard work.
Absolutely, that's why I, I wanted to have the conversation, because, you know, it's, it's, I think it's kind of a hole in the bylaws currently, in my, in my opinion. I wanted to kind of see where you guys stood on that also, so yeah, thank you.
I know you have a second item, but before we go there, did you have a comment on the? Yeah, okay, all right, great.
And I agree with the point.
Okay, you had a second item, I think.
I just had a question for staff. Article 11, section F, it's the very last one. "The commission, by motion passed by a majority of the quorum, may suspend or vary the application of the rules with regard to any proceedings or to any particular problem before the commission." Do you have any, or I guess I should could ask my fellow commissioners, is there an example of when something like that would happen? I know it's in there for a reason, I'm just, it's kind of an interesting, for, you know, suspending the rules for an item, I'm, I'm wondering, under what circumstances that would happen?
I'm trying to think.
I had the same thought process when I was reviewing them, I didn't take it out because I assumed it was a like, if all hell breaks loose, this needs to happen situation, yeah, I, I assumed that it had some sort of legal reference of why.
Pierre, way back when, when we were considering Mackey's hotel project up on Shaky Road, and things got kind of strange, things were getting weird and they were getting weird fast. It seemed like we did something along those lines, we said, okay, we're, we're just, we're just stopping this proceeding and, and we, we called, something like that happened. And we, and I think it was actually under this particular provision, it's not very common. I like, I like flexibility in, in, in bylaws or whatever, that, I like things being written that gives us the flexibility to respond to the situations as they come up. So while it's incredibly rare, I, I think it has happened in my tenure, so.
Absolutely, I was just, you know, it just, it struck me as such a strange incongruous to the rest of the, of the document that I was just was, had a question about it.
Yeah, I, like I said, I had the same thought process, but assumed that it, it referenced situations, you know, someone has a heart attack and the thing, we have to stop it, I don't know, you know what I mean? Like something really crazy happens and it needs to be disrupted, it gave us the authority to do so, which is why I didn't call it out there.
So I think, I think the chair is hearing consensus for a motion to continue this item.
Did we have a motion?
No.
We didn't get a motion.
I'm hearing consensus, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just setting it up for somebody to be comfortable to make a motion, because I think there is consensus for that motion for continuance until our next meeting, so long as we have five members and we'll stay on the agenda until such time as we have five members present so that we can act on it, I think is kind of where we're at. So the chair would entertain a motion to that effect?
Chair, Chair Friend, just, just so the planning commission understands, I think what staff is going to propose to do now is, because I, I too am puzzled with that last item, 11F. And so we will then take the annotated version of this and give it to our city attorney, plus have the city attorney maybe give an explanation as to how that's, that number F, that letter F would apply to what kind of a situation.
Good.
So we would have that for you when we bring this back.
Terrific.
Would you be able to do all that before the next scheduled meeting, Pierre, or do you need more time?
Uh, we should, I mean, this, a lot of these changes are really.
Well, that's two weeks, right? Theoretically, that's two weeks, so don't want to hurt yourself.
Yeah, well.
I'm speaking on behalf of a city attorney, not myself, so. Okay, well, you know, Kristen, did you have a comment on this? No, okay. Yeah, okay, all right. Do we need a date certain or can we just continue until the next time?
We can continue to the next regular meeting of the planning commission.
Continue to the next regular meeting of the planning commission. Can we get a motion then to that effect?
I'll give it a shot. I move that we continue this item 12.2 to our next regularly scheduled meeting to allow staff to present with us, or to us, the revisions that we have discussed for approval.
A second.
A second, so.
Oh, could I have a friendly amendment also with review from the city?
Oh, thank you, yes, thank you for, and also with review from city attorney.
Yeah, great, okay, I think.
Yes, amendable to that.
Any additional discussion on the motion? I think that'll work for what we're doing. We'll get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Friend.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Chair Friend.
Oh, that's, I didn't even catch that. Wow, yeah, I think it's effective immediately.
Didn't have it anywhere.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Chair Lepper.
Commissioner Lepper, yes.
Is it getting late?
I can't take that on end, baby.
Thought I just kind of slipped that in. Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
And Commissioner Smith.
Okay, great, so it's continued and then hopefully we'll be able to dispatch it at our next regular meeting. Okay, now, I, in all of this, I've lost my agenda. Oh, God, thank you very much. We're now on item 12.3, special committees for Article six A of the planning commission bylaws. "The chair with the approval of the planning commission shall appoint standing committees and may appoint special committees." And I think Commissioner Smith, you had wanted this item brought up, I could be wrong, could have been Commissioner Carter, but we did have discussion on this, I think, at our last, last meeting. And in particular, I think there was a discussion about historic district advisory. And someone might want to refresh my memory, is there a staff report on this item? There's.
There is not.
There's not, so this is open to my fellow commissioners. It's true, in the bylaws, we have the ability to do this. And Commissioner Smith, were you, was it your desire to set up a?
I did it as well as I think Commissioner Carter, but the idea is very simple. This body assumed the responsibilities of the historic advisory committee years ago and without a lot of planning or construction, but just filling in the gap. So the idea was that you'd have a subcommittee that would provide study to decide such questions as, should we have an historic advisory committee? If so, what should the scope and responsibilities be? Should it be along the lines of what we had before? How would it function? Would it function to be separate like it was before? And it seems like there's important concerns about having it function with full consideration given to each subject, but also with some speed and deliberation so as to not cause needless delay in cost for. with some speed and deliberation, so as to not cause needless delay in cost for applicants, things of that kind. So those are some of the kind of concerns, but to be able to come back with recommendations for the full body to consider. But also, I think that it would be wise to be able to have issues that have come before, like, we had questions like the cost of putting vinyl windows, how expensive is it? It shouldn't be burdensome. How do we measure burdensomeness? Those are the kind of things. We need standards, because I think in order for the public to respect what we do, we need to be consistent to the extent possible. When it comes to, and these are just giving you some ideas, but they're open for discussion.
So, would I be presumptuous in assuming that you and possibly Commissioner Carter would be interested in sitting on a special advisory committee for the commission on the matter of historic districts and considerations?
I would absolutely be willing.
Absolutely.
Well, then, I've never done this action before, so what is necessary for that to, I can just make the appointment?
Well, certainly, you can make the appointment for a subcommittee, and then that committee then can meet on its own, come up with questions, deliberate on the issues, and bring it back. I just want to caution with regards to timing, staff is reviewing three architects that specialize in historic preservation, and we will select one. We do have a budget that was approved by the city council, and so we will be scheduling a joint city council, planning commission workshop on the matter. We don't know, maybe one, or maybe two workshops, we're going to work that out with the consultants. And so, I think maybe it'd be timely to have that subcommittee maybe fashion those kinds of questions that you want to maybe raise at that workshop, because it's going to be more interactive between the council members and the commissioners with the consultants, so those kinds of questions regarding costs and materials and all those kinds of things, you know, that could be helpful. But I wouldn't want that to occur prior to having that meeting, and then prior to a discussion between council members and planning commissioners, because it'll be the, it'll basically be the city council then giving final direction on what they want to see in terms of creation of a historic advisory committee, reinstatement of that, because it was the, it was the city council that eliminated it and gave it back to the commission.
So.
That was going to be my sort of take on actually creating a special committee prior to, I think it should be created after the joint council commission meeting.
But I have a, I have a slightly different approach to that, because I think that appointing a committee, two members could actually begin to develop some of the questions that, or issues that they would, the points they would like to see addressed, right, with what the council is doing. And then those, that could actually even be brought back to this commission for discussion, and we could, you know, present that to council. So I don't necessarily see those in conflict, I actually see one helping the work of the other.
I think my only comment on that would be that I would expect all five of us to be thinking of questions that we have around the historic matters. I mean, we all are here when it comes up over and over again. We have inconsistency, we have conflict, and so I would think that my inclination would be that we would all be coming up with those questions in anticipation of this formal training, basically, or whatever, consultation, because that's our opportunity with an expert, and so, like, I myself am not necessarily going to jump on serving on a committee just for my own timeline right now, but I definitely have thoughts and questions around the historic districts that I will be developing prior to that reading.
This is a, this is a very interesting, I'm really trying to kind of process this, right? Because it seems to me that if the chair were to establish, shall appoint a standing committee, which is what the bylaw, I'm looking at the bylaws. When does liable or necessary, the chair with the approval of the planning commission shall appoint standing committees and may appoint special committees. A standing committee is one that's going to exist, like, moving forward forever. So I think in this instance, because of the timing, I would be more inclined to appoint a special committee.
Chair, if I may, yeah, that's an important distinction I wanted to make in this conversation, is that there is a huge difference between a standing and a special committee. A special committee dissolves when its job is done.
Correct, but where I was, I'm sorry.
And I would be, I would be in agreement, and that's kind of where I was going with that, was a special committee, not a standing committee at this point.
For sure.
But where I was going, but I think what I was going to point out, and I think we're in concurrence, is that regardless of whether it's standing or special, there has to be specifics.
Yes.
I mean, there has to, because it says, special committees shall be discharged at the end of their assignment. So in setting up of the special committee, there actually has to be an assignment, you know, that's kind of delineated, here's what you're going to do, and then when you're, when you've done that, then you're going to be discharged, right, at the end. So, let me ask the question, because right now, I think that the driving issue, and I think it's for all of us, frankly, because I think, as Commissioner Smith has said, you know, we, we want to have consistency, objectivity, and defensibility with the decisions that we make, right?
Absolutely.
And particularly with the Secretary of Interior's standards and guidelines, and while that they're specific in some areas, they're absolutely ambiguous in others, and it causes, it causes issues for us, frankly. And we want to avoid that at all levels, we're all interested in that, right? But it really is, from what I, what I see, my experience, right now, the pressing issue is dealing with historic district stuff, okay? So then, given that, and given what the city is planning to do, do we still want to set up a special committee on this topic? And then if so, what specifically would its assignment be? And I, the only thing I can think of is I would want this special committee to possibly aggregate, create a list, if nothing else, all of the challenges that we have experienced, and the questions that we have, and how we might resolve them, to be then presented for discussion here, and then with the process the city is moving forward. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
What would have occurred to me?
I see Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Keeney.
I just wanted to address Commissioner Lepper's concerns. I would speak for myself, not be so presumptuous as to suggest a subcommittee operating separately from the full body, as just that you need some diligence and staff work, and we don't have the staff work to do everything we'd like to have done. So it's a matter of making recommendations for this full body, and not to replace, and speak separately with two different heads of the same body. So that's number one. We do have a lot of reoccurring questions that go beyond just whether or not we're going to have a advisory committee or not, such as the standards for what constitutes prohibitive costs. And I think the other term I've kind of forgotten, because it too is kind of vague, is what are the standards that are, where it's impossible to do? How do we measure those things? That's something we need to do, and have some clear policy that we can use in the future, just so we can be consistent. So I think there's some things that keep reoccurring. And a last thing is, is my thought was, and it's just thinking out loud, but we've never had hearings before, and I think this is something where it'd be particularly helpful to hear from the public, there's a number of historic groups, there's real estate people, developers, people have expertise in these areas, and it'd be important to hear from them to help formulate some, some policy recommendations. For example, when it comes to these questions about wooden chingles, or other wooden chingles that are fireproof and things like that, there's a directory, a resource manual that could be prepared, the staff can't do it, that's a big project. But over and over, applicants come, and they don't have answers to these questions, like about vinyl windows, there are different manufacturers of these thermal windows, and they, they may sell you on the idea that they're going to save you lots of energy, but they're not all insulated the same way. So having a resource manual might be useful, how do you go about doing that? So that's not something I think the full body could do, but giving some direction might be helpful.
All right.
So the special committee would be tasked right now, Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Smith, with gathering a sort of menu of topics that have come up and had inconsistency in the past?
Yeah, that's what I think I would like initially, and then to bring those back to this body for full discussion.
But under the case in point, or issue in point, is the Secretary of Interior Standards and the upcoming session that we're going to have with the expert, the city council, that workshop. And what we started talking about was having a special commission, or a special committee formed. I think, I don't know what the timeline is, I know you're talking to some different consultants, experts, I don't know what the timeline is, but it might be more effective and more efficient for us to have that agendized, and so we have the committee of the whole, we all have input, as opposed to having two of you go out and you, you know, brainstorm, come back to us, then, you know, the other three have a chance to give input, but then, how does, how do we resolve that and come up with our list of questions ahead of the workshop that, you know, we've been anticipating? I would, in this case, think it'd be more efficient to have that topic agendized, once staff has an idea of when the workshop's going to take place, if we could have that as an agenda item on an upcoming meeting, where we all come prepared, and, you know, we have different levels of interest and time, but, you know, it could be the two of you have more time to devote to that topic, so you, you would be informing all of us ahead of the meeting, but rather than you taking time out to have your own session, and then reporting to us, agendizing that, you see where I'm...
Well, yeah.
I think we're in the same sort of thought process.
Except, but I am, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two commissioners who are actually, would be willing to serve on a special committee, to compile, and brainstorm, for lack of a better term, a number of issues that have come up before this commission with regards to the historic districts, and then to bring that information back to the entire commission for discussion, which then the commission would be in a better position to participate, I think, collectively, with what the city is going to do. So I actually think this, doing this actually kind of starts getting, it's kind of like marinating ahead of the barbecue, for lack of a better term, if that makes sense.
I would like to see a specific direction, you know, Article six, you pointed out earlier, the special committees shall be discharged at the end of their assignment, you know, that indicates that there...
There is an assignment.
There is something specific, so...
I haven't provided the assignment yet, so I...
So, yeah, I would like to, before we vote on it, you know, I want to know what the alignment of their charge is.
Right, that's what I have to provide, so I'm still, I'm still working through the mechanics on this. Okay, and I have a question for staff. It's not written here anywhere, but a special or standing committee cannot be comprised of more than two members?
Correct.
Right, well, then it's cool.
Going back to our previous discussion on the bylaws, it seems to me that that is something that should be added, right? That that probably should be noted somewhere, or is...
It's the Brown Act.
Okay, well, I think it would be helpful, just to...
I don't think it needs to be in there, the Brown Act violation.
You don't think it needs to be, okay, so that's, I mean, I, I just kind of guessed that, all right, so.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, kind of where I was going with this, just to address some of those concerns, I actually wasn't envisioning this necessarily as a precursor to that workshop. I was envisioning this special committee more as laying the groundwork for this body to properly assume what was given to us when the historic advisory committee was dissolved. I'm seeing it more as reaching out to groups that were historically in touch with the historic advisory committee. I don't see us discussing, at least in the beginning, anything having to do with policy, more just trying to lay the groundwork of getting the educational and outreach functions of the historic advisory committee, laying the groundwork to reestablish those, and bring back a recommendation to this commission. In that regard, in the beginning, less of actual digging into the standards or the policies at this point, just really trying to figure out how we can properly fill the role of the historic advisory committee as we are charged to do, and by no means overstep the bounds of trying to develop questions to suggest to you guys or anything like that. I more envisioned it as just beginning the process of assuming the duties that we have been given, and bringing back recommendations to this commission about how we can do that.
So if I were to say that I'm going to recommend that a special committee is appointed to analyze and bring back to the broader body recommendations for how this body should fulfill its obligations in assuming the role of the historic advisory committee, because that's basically what happened, right? There was a historic advisory committee, it was dissolved, those responsibilities were given to us. Now, what exactly does that mean, what does that look like? And so, a special committee would get together, and they would say, okay, here's how we think we might approach this, and let's put this on paper and bring it back to the commission to discuss, and see if we can get the commission to say, yep, that's kind of how we should do it. Is that kind of what you're envisioning?
That is more of what I had in mind, and not actually...
I recall this from the last meeting.
Addressing specific upcoming workshops or anything, and policy of changing any standards or anything in that regard, just mostly trying to establish some groundwork for how we can properly assume those duties.
So let me see if I can distill this down further to an assignment. A special committee will be appointed to determine, to determine how the commission will act, will act in the exercise of, of its duties as the historical advisory committee, because that's kind of what it is, right? That's the assignment. So you're going to, you're going to say, okay, you're going to come back to us, and I guess what I would envision is the work product, coming back to us and saying, okay, here is how we can, where we should implement the duties and responsibilities that once were with the historic advisory committee, and that are now ours. That's what you're going to provide to us, that's your assignment, is that what you're saying?
Commissioner Smith, does that sound like something that you can work within? Because I'm comfortable with that.
Sounds like a specific enough assignment?
I'm going to argue that, I think it's a specific assignment, I don't see the utility. I think that this body has always acted as an effective historical review committee. I, you know, some of our decisions have been reversed on appeal, but I think that every commissioner has always taken that responsibility very seriously, and has discharged their duties effectively. So I, I don't, I don't see the need for this, and also feel like it's, I just don't see the need for it. I think we do, do a very effective job, and part of that, I think, Mr. Smith's problem, he mentioned on several occasions now that things are vague, and not clear to him, and I think that the reason, and maybe we'll get clarification when we have the workshop, certain standards have to be vague. Things that come before us are site-specific, and you can't have a hard and fast rule for that stands, and then would adequately be applied to every project that comes before us. You have to have some flexibility, that's, that's exactly why we are here. We, in other cases, we grant variances, we look at the site-specific conditions, and we find what's reasonable. And honestly, I think the planning commission has routinely done a fantastic job on that. We look at the evidence that's given to us, and we discuss it, and we come to our conclusion, and, you know, so I think in the, we've done a very good job on that. So I don't see the need for a special commission. If there is a problem, if there's a question on how we function with this historical review committee, perhaps we should take a look at how, what the charge was, the description of that old committee, and see if that, if there's something that we're missing. But I don't think we do, I think our staff reports are very in-depth analysis, so that the facts are brought before us. One thing that is lacking, and, and, you know, it came up tonight, Commissioner Friend, I know that, or Chair Friend, I know that this is bugaboo for you, is when the applicant doesn't show up, and we can't ask questions about that site-specific project, and that's just, that's how it turns out. It's unfortunate, I wish they did show up every time, I wish more people would come in. in from the public. You've mentioned that there are experts in our community who could provide some insight that we don't have. So, you know, those people should show up, but forming a committee does not necessarily mean that we're going to be able to take advantage of that expertise if those people don't want to participate in the public process, and it should be part of the public process. It should be out, recorded, for everyone to hear and learn from. So...
Allow me, allow me to pull this back just for a second, because I don't disagree with anything that you said.
Well, okay, I'll just leave it with this, that while I appreciate your willingness to do extra work on behalf of the commission, I think that all the commissioners, perhaps this is just a clarion call for us to make sure that we read for detail and do our job on all aspects.
I think, just if I may echo that I agree with Commissioner Keeney, that I don't disagree with the heart of the reasoning for the commission, the committee, but I disagree with the need for it, and I think we should all be gearing up for this joint meeting with city council, really reviewing the topics that have come before us and the inconsistencies that we all see have happened or have been confusing. And I do think that a special committee could be appointed, but I, I think it should be after we have the meeting with the city council, because I think we could get some clarity there, that will enhance the assignment that they're given, and they can get together anyway and talk about the menu if they want to. Like, if you guys want to get together and chat and come up with ideas, you're welcome to, I could do that with anyone, I could do that with you too. There's nothing stopping you from doing that, but I don't see the point, as stated by Commissioner Keeney as well, of actually appointing a special committee. That's just my interpretation.
If I might, real quick, Chair, there's two specific things that the historic advisory committee was charged with originally in their, in their establishment. One was to maintain and update the local inventory of historic resources within the city, as established by the city council. That has not been done since the mid-eighties. So I, that's one thing that I, I think that this commission would be, I mean, that's something that's an important part of that historic preservation that, that we're charged with doing. Another is outreach, see, committee is charged to work in a cooperative effort with other governmental agencies and civic groups, e.g., historic, or, sorry, the Heritage Association of El Dorado County for the advancement of historic preservation. I don't believe that those two items are something that this commission can properly tackle as a full body. I think that's something that a special committee could really benefit us, is in, it allows two members of the, of the committee to reach out to other interested governmental agencies and civic groups to possibly try and foster some relationships without it having to be a public meeting, that we could then come back to you guys and suggest the framework, once again, I'll mention that, to move this forward to a more formal manner. And that's kind of what I had, and I wasn't intending to try, at this point, to even address standards or review, that should all remain where it's at. I'm not trying to change any of that. I want the planning commission to review all site plan reviews, I don't want any of that to change. I was just more trying to capture some of the responsibilities that the original historic advisory committee was charged with that have not been addressed in a very long time. And that's kind of where I was going.
If I may, take the prerogative, Chair, and I, because I do want to bring this to a close, because I think Commissioner Carter has provided just an excellent examples of what a special committee would deal with specifically, okay? And from where I'm sitting at this point right now, it seems to me that I, first of all, you don't know what you don't know, right? And so, we don't know what a special committee might come up with. And we have two commissioners that are willing to do this, and I don't see any harm then in allowing them to do that, and, and saying, okay, well, here is your task, and specific of those two items that you just mentioned, how will this body do, execute these responsibilities, these two specific responsibilities? I think that's, I don't think that's unreasonable, and I don't think it's in conflict with either our normal deliberations or in anticipation of what's happening with the city. I see it as complementary, frankly. So what I'm going to do, again, because the chair can run the meeting as the way he wants to, according to what we just talked about before, so I am going to request approval of my fellow commissioners, and we'll do it on a, on a vote, to, and I'm assuming it's Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Carter, to serve on a special committee to this commission for the purpose, and I don't have those two items, but the purpose of recommending back to this body how we will implement our responsibilities of the historic committee. Are there items, let me just read this, so I can be specific.
Do we need public comment? I don't mean to interrupt you, I don't know if that's fine, we need public comment on?
Uh, boy. It's on the, it's actually on the agenda. So this is a process I have not gone through yet in all my time on this dais. I will go ahead and open it up, but I, just to close, here's where I want to go. This special committee would be responsible for advising, making recommendations back to us for discussion on how we will implement our responsibility to maintain and update the local inventory of historic resources within the city, and make recommendations to update that inventory, and how we will work in a cooperative effort with other government agencies and civic groups, i.e. the Heritage Association for the Advancement of Historical Preservation. In other words, what will this commission do? How will we, how will we implement their responsibility? That will be the assignment, that you would report back to us on exactly how that will happen. Now, before I ask for us to technically vote on it, I will go ahead and open it up to the public, if anyone wishes to speak on this item, which there might be someone. Thank you for that, Commissioner Carter.
Thank you, I'll try and be quick. Yeah, I agree with creating a subcommittee, at least one to start with, they have no special authority, they're just going to go brainstorm, come up with some ideas, report back to full commission, y'all have a discussion, decide to take action or not, so I don't, I don't see the problem in it. Yeah, the assignment could also be to prep for this workshop, which might kind of conjure it to happen faster. A separate subcommittee could be going through the Secretary of the Interior guidelines, and also discuss with city, are these guidelines or are these enforceable laws? I remember when they were adopted, it was kind of a stopgap, they were already written for the federal, we just adopted them. But a subcommittee could go through, like, that beautiful document, and underscore, strike out, and make it fit Placerville. So that's a task the special committee could do. Another one could go through city code and other documents and make recommended changes of language to council, and then it comes back and you all have a discussion on what to, if any, to send to city council, that would save some staff time. Prepare a list of resources, materials, professionals in the local area, take voluntary applications from property owners who might want to have potentially eligible structures to be included. Those are just different ideas, but I don't see a problem with it, because it's just a brainstorming group, and they'll come back and then report to you, and then you all hash it out then.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to, oh, oh, actually...
I'm not that fast.
I just want to say that I support the special committee, and I think that it's going to do nothing but enhance the knowledge of the planning commission, and I think it's a great idea. Those items that were mentioned have not been kept up, and it is a good way to reconnect and, I think, close a gap that is needing closed, given the decisions that are made here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm not entirely sure what the mechanics are of this, it's not a motion per se. I think the chair is simply asking, if I read the bylaws correctly, I get approval from my fellow commissioners. So it is the chair's desire to appoint Commissioners Carter and Smith to serve on a special, not-standing special committee, to address the two items that I mentioned previously, and I think we'll just go down, down the row, if we might, and just get a yea or nay, and that will decide, determine whether or not I have the approval of the, of the commission to do this.
I would just comment that it was my impression earlier on that the commission then would desire that each item would be voted on by roll call, not just an affirmation.
Yes, I'm going to ask you to call each name, yeah, and, and we'll just move, move down, move down the list, so if you'd be kind enough to call for, what's different is, this is not, I need a motion and a second, this is different, right? So we're not going through that process, so it's going to be a roll call vote on approval of the chair to appoint this special committee.
I think the chair has the authority to be the first and the second.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair Keeney?
No.
Chair Lepper?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Okay, on a split vote, we will have our first special committee in, well, like, almost forever, and so, just now, having done that, we're all clear on what the assignment is, right? Any ambiguity in the assignment? Okay, and when reasonably, I'm not going to require that you, or request that you report back to us in two weeks, although you might, you might give us a progress report in two weeks. We got together, we didn't have a chance to get together, I would certainly, I think this committee now needs to be on the agenda until such time as it's discharged, at least for a report back to the commission and the public. Okay, that would be great. Okay, thank you all very much, and the discussion I appreciate a lot. And then 12-4, review and consideration of dissolution of Resolution 201901, this resolution of intention of the Placerville Planning Commission to initiate amendments to the Placerville City Code regarding exemption from site plan review procedure required under City Code Section 10-4-9(c)(6) for historic district review. And I believe, Commissioner Carter, you had brought this up at the last meeting, and before, I'd like to turn it over to you, because there's no staff report on this, correct?
Just a memorandum summarizing the request that was made at the last meeting.
Okay, and, so, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, and I guess you're going to explain this, but I thought this, my recollection of this resolution was that if a, if a project came before us that met all the requirements, and let, you know, in historic review, and it was, it was like-for-like, and basically just all the boxes could be checked off, it could then be exempt from the site plan review. Was that, and I'm directing this question to staff, wasn't that the purpose of this resolution, that we were exempting a project that, that if it checked all the boxes, they didn't have to come to site plan review? And if I'm wrong on that, please correct me, if I'm...
The way I read it is that staff was to come back with amendments, and that was something I was concerned about, Pierre, is that, I think this was Andrew Painter's initiative, and so I don't know that anything would ever came of it. Did staff ever come with draft amendments to Section 9?
No, staff did not.
Okay, so, so the intent, the intent of the resolution was to streamline the process for those projects in, in historic districts, that you could check all the boxes off. Staff hasn't had a chance to get it done, so I think the question then becomes, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Commissioner Carter.
Okay.
Don't let me misrepresent the issue.
Absolutely.
The question becomes, is that still of value? Is it still of value, or is it not? So I'll just turn it over to you to...
I appreciate that. So a little background on this item, genesis of this resolution was April 2, 2019, planning commission meeting, item number 6.2, and anybody that's interested in that conversation, it begins at 26 minutes and 30 seconds on that, on that video, the original conversation. The original conversation came about in, because, back in July and August of 2014, the planning commission held a discussion and a workshop regarding potential alteration activities to historic buildings located within historic districts. Activities discussed included photovoltaic panel installations, like material for like material, re-roofing, like-for-like style and appearance siding, and windows and existing openings that have like styles and operations. So that's kind of where they, they had workshops back in 2014 regarding exemptions from the site plan review. It was brought back on April 2, and it was, Mr. Painter was doing that. Now, these code amendments never materialized, so a lot has changed since 2019, but the conversations about SOI standards have not, as they apply to historic buildings. They've continued to be an issue for this commission. So, our city code requires us as a commission to review all applications for building permit involving any proposed destruction or alteration of buildings, as you know. Protecting the integrity of our historic districts is paramount, and I say, just in light of, especially in light of this upcoming workshop, I kind of see this resolution as kind of a loose end. I see this upcoming workshop with the city council as an opportunity to kind of restart these efforts, and what I would like to see is just kind of rescind this old, kind of outdated resolution, and let's get through this workshop, and let's reestablish this process with current staff. And that is kind of where I was heading with that, just to give you guys an idea of where my mind was, it's just kind of a loose end hanging out there, that I believe is a process that we should restart after this upcoming workshop with city council, so that's where I was going with it.
Okay, very good, that's helpful. I guess I'll just start, and any commissioner can jump in. It could very well be that after the workshop, we're going to have, that it's clear that this is not appropriate and should be gone. Or it could be that, oh, well, we already have something on the books, now the workshop would provide some direction to staff, and/or another special committee could be appointed to create some suggestions for staff that, you know, the commission could debate and then give to staff, right? So, I, I'm not, I'm not convinced about the, of the urgency of the need to dissolve this, more, I think it's absolutely correct when you point out that this is kind of a, another piece to this, not puzzle, but this mosaic that we have regarding the historic district and everything, right? Because it's the most, one of the most complicating things that we deal with, I think frankly, because it's got the most subjectivity in it, from my perspective, anyway. My inclination, and I'm not sure, I might be ambivalent on this as well, my inclination is, let's just let this ride until we get through the workshop and then see what its applicability would be, and then we can make a determination then as to whether or not, yeah, this doesn't work for us anymore, or, yeah, actually, this is kind of on point with, with our philosophy. Personally, I would like to go back and review this video and just see that discussion again, and I appreciate the detail that you provided with that. So that's kind of where I'm at, I don't know where anybody else is at on this.
I appreciate that. My problem with rescinding this is an attempt to undo the work of a prior planning commission, and I really am reluctant to do that. I think, I remember this, I was not present for the vote, as it's indicated on the bottom of the resolution, but at the time, I was not in favor of it, you know, having read the staff report, but I wasn't present to cast my vote. But, be that it as it may, the, the existing planning commissioners who did vote in favor of it did so with all due deliberation, and I think it is a dangerous precedent to undo work of a prior commission without real harm being assigned to it if, after we have our workshop, if we see that this is a harmful direction for the city to go in, then that's a different, different case altogether. However, looking at it, I can still see that amendments that would allow for a streamlining of a project could be developed at some point, I think that would, you know, the planning commission voiced its preference for that, and, you know, at the time, there were good reasons, I think it would... I think it would deserve full discussion, maybe, again, of the Planning Commission and maybe even City Council before moving forward with such amendments and streamlining it. But my principle on this is, if this group deliberated and passed a resolution, then in, let's see, five, four or five years on, for another planning commission to undo our work, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's the direction we want this body to go in.
My preference would actually be to move this to table until such time as we have the workshop, and then bring it back from table and see what its relevance is at that point. I don't think, I don't think we're being harmed by having it in place now.
It's been there for four years.
And, yeah, it's been there for four years, and again, I would like to go back and view this and appreciate what your comments of the fact we did deliberate on this. And at the same time, I'm sure you're not saying that things can change, as you mentioned, and then we, we have to update. It's like, well, this is no longer appropriate, right? Okay, so, so those aren't, those aren't in conflict. So, it could have just a move to table, right? Which would probably be the best for this particular item, move to table the site until such time after the workshop to determine its relevancy based upon what we gain at that point.
I'll second that.
And a move to table requires an immediate vote, according to Robert's Rules, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it? I guess some discussion.
No, I think actually a move to table is one of those few things in Robert's Rules that you have to take an up or down vote. But the Chair will waive the rules, as I am allowed to do, and see how exciting this gets. I don't mind being here.
You're having fun.
The Chair will entertain discussion before the vote on the move to table.
Well, I just wanted you to know that I'm inclined to go your direction, and the reason is, you have some strong opposition, and I think you also suggested you wanted to look at the tape, which is very appropriate. Before anybody acts, they need to be well-informed. We have a couple of people who've looked at the, at the tape, all of you should look at it, and be well-aware of what was done and why. So, that alone would prompt me to think is appropriate to table it.
So, the Chair did suspend the rules and allow discussion, just for the record? So, now we have utilized that provision that Pierre's going to ask the lawyer about. So, with that, could I get a roll-call vote and a move to table of this item until after the workshop? And staff will have to remind me to bring it back from table when it's time to do so?
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
No.
Chair, Commissioner Lepper?
Aye, and there's a typo on the memorandum of 2022. It needs to be 2023.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Commissioner Carter, you have to...
And Commissioner Carter.
I'm unclear. We're voting to table it.
Moving it, yeah.
Until after the...
Yeah, to move to table, yes.
Aye, aye.
Okay. So, the item has been tabled until such time after, subsequent to our, our workshop, then we'll bring it back from table to discuss its relevance. And I may have created an error, I probably should have had public discussion on this, and just got to get used to doing that, so, sorry about that, Mr. Drobish. Okay. Again, just stimulating discussion, truthfully. Moving then on to item 13.1, staff reports.
I have three items just to bring to the commission's attention. Last week, we did get the building permit application for harbor freights, and this week, we received permit applications for both the Middletown and the Mallard affordable housing projects.
Where's the harbor freight going in?
That's going in at what used to be the Carriage Trade Center.
Oh, right, right, right.
Up on Upper Broadway, the shopping center there with grocery outlet.
That's great. That's fantastic. Thank you. Okay. And we, do we have a meeting in two weeks?
We do, yes.
Okay.
May 16th.
Okay, May 16th, fantastic. Happy Mother's Day. All right. And then, Planning Commission, anything else from staff? Item 13.2, Planning Commission matters. Any commissioners have items for staff? Seeing none, the Chair will move to adjourn the meeting at approximately 8:17. Thank you all so much.